The Planning Board is now in session. Would you rise and join us in the of the United States of America? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We thank you.
Please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The first item on the agenda, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Part two, item two, number 2010-10 Edward and Patricia Martella. Item four, number 2010-06 KVC Holdings. Item five, number 2010-02 King Cohen Grocery. Item six, number 2007-01 Gyrodine Company of America. Item seven, number 2007-04 Society of St. Johnlin. Item eight, number 2009-05 FB4 Realty. Part three, item nine, number 1053A Burgess Estates. Item 10, number 911A Glen Hill Northern. Part five, item 13, number 926 Countryside of Smithtown. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment this evening.
Is there anybody here to be heard on those items to be adjourned? Hearing none, a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the items read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda, under part one, item one, number 1127, excuse me, point one, Catherine Estates. Mr. Chairman, I just want to make the board aware, before I begin reading the memorandum, that there was a revision made to the memorandum, and subsequently, there was a sentence left in from the original draft that when I do read the memo, I will not include on the record. The applicant is requesting to subdivide a one-acre parcel of land into two single-family residential lots. This is a resubmission of an application previously numbered as case number 1127 that was brought before the board on April 21, 2010. The applicant's request is for a revised layout that is substantially different from case number 1127. The final map of Catherine Estates, number 1127.1, is comprised of a single tax lot that is rectangular in shape and owned by the applicant. There is an existing one-story dwelling on the proposed lot number one, and one new dwelling is proposed on lot number two. The property has 120 feet of road frontage on an existing town road known as Darling Avenue. To the east, south, and west of the site, properties are zoned R-10, single-family residential, 10,000 square feet minimum. Immediately to the north is county-owned parkland known as Miller's Pond, and directly north is the Village of the Branch. While the proposal meets the lot area requirements for the R-10 zoning district, variances will be required for lot number one for a rear yard setback from 50 feet to 40 feet for the existing dwelling. Lot number two will require variances to reduce the front yard setback from 40 feet to 35 feet and reduce the frontage at setback of 75 feet minimum to 25 feet. These variances are required due to the layout of the proposed subdivision, which is known as a flag lot or house behind a house design. In his previous application, the applicant proposed a traditional or side-by-side design. While that proposal also required dimensional variances, the layout reflected the character of the adjacent neighbors' properties that have long, narrow bowling alley-style lots. It should also be noted that prior to 1972, the flag lot design was permissible by Town Code in one-acre zoning and in other zoning districts with variances granted by the Planning Board. In 1972, the Town Board restricted the creation of flag lots, allowing this design only if it was preferred for some public purpose. For example, creating a public street to serve only one or two homes would not be economical for the municipality. Should this application receive approval by the board, the required variances can be granted per section 322-30.4 of the Town Code, and they will appear in a table of modifications on the final map to be filed with the Suffolk County Clerk. The property is level with elevations ranging from 52 feet to 51 feet above sea level. The depth to groundwater is more than 10 feet, and no problems are anticipated with respect to groundwater. The site does not contain any wetland or natural surface water features. The proposal appears to comply with the standards of the Suffolk County sanitary code with respect to sewage flow and septic system setbacks. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments recommend approval. The Planning Department does not recommend approval of this application because the proposal creates a flag lot design, and we cannot determine any public purpose in granting the variances for that layout. Flag lots were originally permitted under the town's subdivision regulations. In February of 1971, the Town Board eliminated those regulations. While the Town Board's action did not prohibit the Planning Board from creating flag lots using the Board's variance powers, it eliminated a property owner's ability to create a flag lot as a matter of right. Planning has not supported the creation of flag lots within subdivisions and the subsequent variances that would be required unless there is no other viable design and it will serve some public purpose. In a prior layout, the applicant demonstrated that the property can be subdivided without the creation of a flag lot with minor frontage variances. Therefore, we recommend that design. The Board indicated that they were in favor of moving forward with a new application that included a layout creating a flag lot design at the May 19, 2010 Planning Board meeting. Therefore, the Planning Department has prepared a resolution reflecting the Board's decision regarding this matter. The following resolution is recommended for Catherine Estates, number 1127.1, from the Department of Environment and Waterways pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Be it resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown hereby declares itself lead agency on this matter and finds that this matter is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act and is listed as an unlisted action pursuant to SECR. And be it resolved that the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown does hereby issue a SECR-negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance, and environmental impact statement is not necessary, in the matter of the application for subdivision approval by Dan Hickey and Catherine Boswick for Catherine Estates, number 1127.1, for the following reasons. A) The proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the environmental conservation law of the State of New York or the Smithtown Town Code. B) The parcel does not appear to suffer from any severe environmental development constraints, no high groundwater, no poor soil properties, and no unmanageable slopes. C) The small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. D) The proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land use. E) The project as proposed on the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by John Minto, licensed land surveyor, and dated March 2, 2010, provides for the retention of a significant amount of existing trees and natural vegetation upon the development of the subject parcel. And be it resolved that the final plat of Catherine Estates, number 1127.1, is hereby approved, subject to the following conditions. Mr. Chairman, conditions A through L are the standard conditions that are placed on all subdivision applications. If the Board favorably considers the applicant's variance request, the Planning Department suggests the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby modifies the building zone ordinance of the code of the Town of Smithtown for the subdivision known as Catherine Estates, number 1127.1, as detailed in the table of modifications below. This table shall be shown on the final map to be filed in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. And be it further resolved that the Chairman of the Planning Board is hereby authorized to sign the final plat, thereby approving said plat after the Town Board has posted a performance bond of satisfactory form and amount. And be it further resolved that the conditional approval of said final plat shall expire 180 days after the date of this resolution and within 90 days after the Chairman of the Planning Board signs the final maps of this plat, unless said plat shall have been duly filed or recorded by the owner, excuse me, in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk. Mr. Chairman, this is the recommendation for Catherine Estates, number 1127.1.
We thank you. Is there anyone here representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. We've been through this a couple of times, so I'll be brief. We feel that the application as proposed, with the map as proposed, is best suited for this lot. We ask the Board for its favorable consideration. It's been about five years since we started this trek, so if the Board finds this favorable, we ask the Board to vote on it tonight. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this? Would you come to the microphone and give your name and address, please?
Yes, good evening. My name is Tom Poliwcak. That's P-O-L-I-V-E-L-K victory, K-A. I reside at 54 Darling Avenue in Smithtown. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board. I appreciate this opportunity to address you this evening. I'm here once again to emphatically state that my wife and I are adamantly opposed to this subdivision proposal, or for that matter, any subdivision proposal at 52 Darling Avenue in Smithtown. We moved here in 1973 and have been in the same house ever since. The reason we chose this house was because of its location and the quality of life we were looking for. We are surrounded by woods, including county parkland on the north side of Darling Avenue. We were looking for peace and quiet, and we found it. This proposal would not only destroy the beauty and character of the area, let me emphasize the word "character," which was used by Blaise over here, but would also destroy the quality of life we have enjoyed for almost 40 years. We already have one house in our backyard, and we don't need a second one. We don't want to look out our kitchen window and see two houses. And what about property values? How easy would it be for me to sell my home when there are two houses sitting in my backyard? At the Planning Board meeting held on April 21, 2010, the applicant submitted a revised subdivision plan, the same flag lot design which was rejected by the previous Planning Board Chairman, Mr. Martin, in May of 2007. This was a drastic change from the application he submitted in December of 2007. The application submitted in December 2007, which did not include a flag lot design, was never brought to the Planning Board for consideration because all of the necessary steps, requirements, were not completed, namely the SECR recommendation. My understanding is that the applicant was asked to amend the tree preservation plan to include three existing trees. This was never done, as far as I know, and consequently, this application remained dormant until March of 2010, when this revised application was submitted. This begs the question, why did the applicant never complete the SECR request and presumably receive approval for the December 2007 subdivision plan? After much debate, it was determined at the last meeting, I believe, that a new subdivision application was required. I believe that this flag lot subdivision request is not permissible by the Town of Smithtown building zoning ordinances. This property is classified as residential R-10 and requires minimum lot frontage at the setback line, as well as a minimum front yard, minimum side yard, and minimum rear yard depths, as stated earlier. The minimum lot frontage at setback line is 75 feet. As it does not meet this requirement, a variance is required. From 1992 to 1994, changes to the New York State Town, Village, and City laws went into effect that modified the way zoning boards of appeal reviewed and approved requests for variances. I believe that this matter falls under area variances. By definition, area variances shall mean the authorization by the zoning board of appeals for the use of land in a manner which is not allowed, I repeat, not allowed, by the dimensional or physical requirements of the applicable zoning regulations. And now I'm quoting, "The new test is a simple weighing of the benefit to the applicant receiving the requested relief against the detriment to the community," end quote. Under section 267B3, in making its determination, the zoning board of appeal shall take into consideration the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted, as weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. In making such determination, the board shall also consider, and again, I'm quoting, whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character, again, the word "character" appears, of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties, which includes mine, created by the granting of the area variance, and whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals. With removal of the requirement that the applicant first prove significant economic injury to qualify for an area variance, the consideration by the zoning board of appeals of potential negative impacts on the community becomes more important. The detriment of the community, oh, I'm sorry, the detriment to the community can be undesirable changes to either the character, once again, the word "character," or physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. The legislative changes also specifically allow zoning board of appeal to take into account any negative impact on nearby properties. In my opinion, this difficulty is self-created, and by the granting of the area variance, this most definitely will result in undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as will, as be a detriment to nearby properties. This will have a negative impact on my property, as well as other neighboring properties. The planned use is not compatible with neighboring land uses, in fact, quite the opposite. Last week, I had the opportunity to once again review the file of Catherine's Estates, which included an analysis of the flag lot submitted by Mr. Tramarko at the April 4, 2010 Planning Board meeting. I was not surprised to find that only one of 26 applications was approved as a flag lot before 1972, when flag lots were permitted in one-acre zones, variances were required in other zoning categories, and that only two of 36 applications were approved as flag lots after 1972 and required variances by the Board. Clearly, as Mr. Tramarko's own analysis shows, the existence of, and more importantly, the approval of flag lots by the Planning Board is a very rare occurrence in Smithtown. Mr. Chairman, at the April 21, 2010 meeting, I asked, how much weight do my or my neighbor's comments carry as it relates to the Planning Board's decision? And you responded, and I quote, "We take that seriously there. That's the reason you have a Board. That's the reason why I don't like any one person to do something. I'd like the whole Board to get their two cents in for what their feelings are," end quote. I would therefore ask each member of the Planning Board to comment on this application. And in conclusion, I'm hoping that the Planning Board will seriously consider, as the Chairman told me last April, as stated by the Chairman, April 21 of last year, any and all public comments related to the subdivision matter. I would ask the Planning Board to reject this application for all the reasons stated earlier. And let me also, if I could just add one more thing, and that is that the recommendation of your planning director is to reject this proposal, he, they are in favor of the side-by-side proposal that was never brought to your, for your review because, as far as I know, that one item, which is that SECR recommendation, was never, was never approved. So once again, I would ask for your assistance here. I know it's your discretion as to how to go with this over here, but again, based on everything I've said tonight, and again, I'm referring to section 267-B3, which clearly states that the Planning Board shall take into consideration whether there's an undesirable change that will be produced to the character of the neighborhood, in fact, this was stated earlier by your planning director, assistant, okay, as well as creating, being self-created, which in this case it is. So once again, I would ask that the Planning Board members, please, if you can indulge me, and please address this so I know exactly, you know, where each of you stand on this issue.
I just have one question for you.
Yes.
You said that there was another, another building in the back of your yard. Where was that?
Okay, the current home located at 52 Darling Avenue sits back
And how far back does it sit off of Darling?
Well, it sits back far enough so that the, it's not, it's not the, the house is oriented in such a way that the front of the house faces west. So that the east end of the house, which I might add was originally a summer cottage back in the day, faces north on Darling Avenue. The, the beginning of the building starts behind my house. So if I had to guess, I would say it probably sits about 60, 60 feet, 70 feet from Darling Avenue, south. Again, the beginning, the beginning of the building, I use the word "building" purposely here, the beginning of the house, the building, starts behind my house. So I look out my kitchen window, I look at the back of their house, it's a ranch house that runs north and south, and it sits about 15, 16 feet from my property line.
Did that house, did that exist when you bought your property?
Most of it did. There was an addition put on.
When was the addition put on?
The addition was put on in the northeast corner of the house.
Did you object at that time to the, to the addition?
It was a small bathroom. No, I did not.
So that really what, what you're talking about then is one, one building now that's sitting in your backyard?
That's right. Well, when I say, okay, the term "sitting in my backyard," what I mean by that is if I look out my back, out my back kitchen window, there's the house. It's 15 feet from the property. My property is in the shape of a trapezoid. So what happens is that on the, on the west side, which separates myself from 52, the back of the house is right there. And now you're proposing, or they're proposing, to put a second house in the back of my property, once again, and my wife will address some other issues here in a moment, which, which I won't go into, but we're talking about a second house on the same piece of property that now I'll be looking at two houses on my property.
Now, the, the, your property, what's the depth of your, is your property the same, same depth?
360.
In other words, you have the same depth lot?
Yes, yes. As I stated, as I stated earlier, and it was also stated over here, the character of these lots are all the same. These are long, my, mine happens to be in the shape of a trapezoid. My neighbor, number 56, Mr. Ryan Aquino, who's here this evening, he has a rectangle that goes back, again, approximately 360 feet. Mr. Hickey has a piece of property which is about an acre in size, also going back approximately 360 feet. So they're, they're all the same in terms of, in terms of depth. And I might add that most of the property, most of the property is all natural woods. There's nothing back there but woods, trees, trees, and more trees.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your time. Your, I appreciate it.
Sir?
Yes.
In the beginning of your comments, I thought I heard you say you would, you would be against either proposal, either the side-by-side or the
I would be against either one. However, however, if the Board chooses to say Mr. Hickey is entitled to develop his property, and, you know, and so forth and so on, the lesser of two evils, okay? I've had, you know, conversations with my wife at length about this whole thing. We're not in favor of either proposal, quite frankly, but this definitely is something that we are adamantly opposed to because of the issues I raised over here, okay? This is not, as mentioned by the Planning Department, there's no public purpose to this. You're not, there's no public purpose to creating or approving a flag lot here. None whatsoever.
How would, how would the current proposal change the character of the neighborhood?
Well, I explained all of that. All, all of the properties that I'm referring to go back 360 feet, and it's all trees, all woods.
Okay.
You're talking about putting a house in the back of his property, taking down a whole lot of trees back there, and now I'm going to look at a second house on my property. I walked to the back of my property, and now I've got a second house sitting there. Not just one house now, I've got two houses sitting there.
So you would prefer not to look
I would prefer nothing.
Not to look at any house?
I would prefer nothing.
You would prefer if there was no house there, right?
I didn't say that. He's entitled to live there. You know, we have a good relationship. This is not personal, as I mentioned the last time. I would prefer, I would prefer that nothing happens to this property. The property is, and I don't know if anyone has an opportunity to walk, to walk the property, but my wife will present some, some pictures and show you what, what I'm talking about here in terms of the layout and so forth, and may give you a better sense of what I'm talking about. But in terms of the property itself, as I stated in my, in my comments, as I understand it, state law allows you to take into consideration, and I think, if I can use the word, you must take into consideration, the fact that it's going to change the character of the area dramatically. There are no flag, there are two flag lots that have been approved since 1972 with variances, two, since 1972. What is, you know, what, what does it tell you? Mr., and I apologize, Blaise, I don't know his last name, but stated very, very clearly that not only are they, are they opposed to this proposal, but he also mentioned the fact that, again, there's no public purpose to creating this flag lot. None whatsoever. And again, I raise the question, and I mention my comments, you know, what begs the question to me is, what happened over a two-year period? I have the, I'm under the impression, and I might add, by the way, neither my wife and I or any of my neighbors, as far as I know, were aware that Mr. Hickey had proposed this side-by-side situation back in 2006 or 2007. I was not even, I was not aware of it. None whatsoever. Okay? The Planning Board, as I, as I heard it this evening, they would be in favor of that proposal. In fact, it sat and sat and sat for over two years. Why wasn't it completed? That's what I want, I'd like to know the answer. Why wasn't it completed?
I believe, and I'm not speaking for the applicant, but I believe they didn't prefer that, that layout.
They came, as I understand it, and I could be wrong, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they came to the Town Planning Director back in '06 or '07, I have to look up the dates, with this flag lot proposal. The Chairman at that time, this was mentioned at the last meeting.
I was there at the meeting, so I know.
Right, the Chairman at that time was not in favor and suggested
Chairman never said it at the meeting.
Okay, don't, don't bring it
Never.
Right, don't bring
I want you to understand that the Chairman at that time never made a declaration against that application at a meeting.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to answer his question. The point is that it was, it was never, the proposal was never brought forward formally. Consequently, or subsequently, the applicant came forward with a side-by-side proposal, which went through the entire process, you know, different town agencies approved, 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 with one exception, which was SECR. As I read the file, and I could be wrong, the one issue that was, that was never addressed was something about saving more trees, the tree preservation plan. The point I'm making is it sat and sat and sat. Why wasn't it completed? It had gone through all of the departments. The Planning Board, I'm sorry, the Planning Department was in favor of that proposal. The planning board, I'm sorry, the planning department was in favor of that proposal. Why did it sit for all those, all those months and years? And then suddenly, out, you know, out of the blue, now they wanna go back to the original idea of a, of a flag lot.
Well, we didn't, you see...
No, I'm trying, I'm trying to respond to his question.
I know, but the thing there that I wanna clear up with you is this. The applicant made an application, they had to do this exact thing that he's got here now. If for some reason, it never came to this board, and that's wrong. That's not the way it's supposed to operate. It's supposed to be processed and then recommended to us, and we make a decision, but it was never done that way.
I, I understand that.
Okay? So that, that's only a red herring about their, about their, what happened prior to this.
I'm just, I'm just trying to go through the history.
I know. I understand you completely.
Yeah.
The thing that we have a problem with is, there's no definition that I've been able to find up-to-date of what is a flag lot.
I can give you definition.
No, I'm talking about the law.
Well, I can give you definition of flag lot.
No, I know what you say. I'm saying...
No, 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 it's not what I say.
Well, you better find out there and give me a law on it.
Okay, I'm going, this is from the new, okay, New Illustrated Book of Development definitions. This, this is not my definition. Okay, a, a flag lot, a large lot not meeting frontage requirements, and where access to the public road is by a narrow private right-of-way or driveway.
But you haven't given me a law. I want to know what section of the law, state law, county law, or town law that is specifically mentioned "flag lot" and the definition of it.
Okay, under area variances. Under area variances.
All right, let me, just hold on a minute. We've got counsel here. Counsel, can you clear this up for this gentleman, whether there is anything under the law? A section of the law, state, county, or town, that specifically identifies what a flag lot is?
Well, I can only tell you what, with reference to town to Smithtown, the...
I know what the town board did. What I wanna know is, under the law, what section of the law specifically addresses flag lot and its design or no design?
At present, there's no specific definition of design for a flag lot. It's now just another subdivision which has to meet the same criteria that every other subdivision has.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I understand, I understand your question, okay? I don't have any reference to any law. What I referred to, however, was New York state law as it pertains to area variances, which would then include this particular application because it requires variances for setbacks and side and so forth and so on. And under that, under that particular section of the law, it states very clearly, and I'll, I'll read it again if you'd like, it says whether an undesirable change will be, will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the area variance, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which in this case it is.
What's in the memo?
Now, again, respectfully, I would, I would ask that each board member, if they could share with me and maybe members of the audience, you know, what their position is on this particular matter.
Well, that's what we're gonna get to. We're gonna have to get to that because so far...
Yes.
All we have is the word "flag lot" with no definition there under the law.
Well, I, I don't...
I know it's all, I know it's all what you say and what he says and somebody else, but we have an obligation to follow the law. Okay? And that's what we're going to do, and we're gonna have to let the board hear, listen to what everybody has to say, and then we'll come there to a decision. And it'll be what the board decides, okay? Not what Mr. De Rubis or not what Mr. Donato says, but what the board decides. That's what we're here for. Okay?
No, I, I understand that. Yes, sir.
I just have one more question for you.
Yes.
Is there anything that the applicant can do to address, because if I understand your, your lengthy complaints, it's mostly to do with what it looks like from your...
It's gonna change the character?
Just let me finish, please. Most of your complaints have to do with the way it's going to appear from your vantage point, correct?
My vantage point and my neighbor's vantage point as well.
Let's just talk about you.
Yes, yes.
Is there anything that they can do in terms of natural barrier?
No.
There's no way to do it?
No, there isn't.
Why not?
Well, already, they're already reducing the setback requirements.
But that's a, you understand that we have that privilege to, to, to fit there something that's an application, and we've done it many times for frontage or for side yards or for anything. It's not the first time that we've done that. So that we're not trying to be unfair to you, but we don't wanna be unfair to the applicant either.
Okay, can I just ask one question real quick?
Okay.
I don't mean to, I don't mean to offend you, sir, but was, was the question raised when Mr. Tomarco submitted his analysis of flag lots, did you ask him where that was, where that appeared in the law? When he submitted to the planning board?
First of all, the whole issue came up about the flag lot, and that's what we've been trying there to resolve.
It's not my term.
I know it's not your term. That's exactly our problem.
Yes.
It's not your term.
Sir, I think what Mr. Ashen was getting at was, is there something that could be done that might mitigate your concerns, such as tree planting, some type of a buffer, as far as the view of what you have in the backyard?
It's going to completely destroy the, the, the character of the neighborhood.
Aside from that issue, we, I know your position on that.
The answer is probably no, because we're talking about a, a piece of property that has existed for hundreds of years. The trees that are, are there are sixty, seventy feet, you know, oak trees, okay? In order to put a house back in this, again, my wife has some diagrams she'll show you to give you a better sense of what I'm talking about, the answer is no. This is not something where you can plant a row of pine trees to block the view. It's just not gonna, it just doesn't...
When you, when you mentioned the trees, I, what if the trees weren't there?
I would, I would, I would object to it for the same reason.
But doesn't this gentleman have the right of, of ownership as to, if he decided on his own to eliminate the trees, that would be his decision how to deal with his property, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so how the trees are handled is the applicant's concern, I believe.
Not only that, but if he, if he wanted to plant trees in there to be a buffer for you, he would have that right. You understand what I'm saying?
I suppose he could.
You have a right to do the same thing.
No, I suppose he could.
Because when, when a lot of the properties that were developed in town, it was never anticipated that we were gonna have the amount of people that we have in the town now, and it's growing all the time. So that these subdivisions are gonna come into us, and what we need to find out there is what is the definition of a flag lot, so we can clear that up. We've never had that, we've never had that to where we got a clear definition of it.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if I may, let's put aside the term "flag lot." Let's not even bring it up, okay? Let's just focus our attention on an area variance. And the law clearly states that the planning board needs to consider, take into consideration, in fact, you told me this at the last meeting, okay, take into consideration, and I, I know I'm repeating myself, but I think it's important, needs to consider, in making such, I'm quoting now, "In making such determination, the board shall also consider whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood," which it will, "or a detriment to nearby properties," which it will, "by the granting of, of the area variance, and whether the alleged difficulty was self-created," which it is. Which considerations shall be, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considerations shall be relevant to the decision of the Board of Appeals. Forget about the term "flag lot." Let's just focus our attention on the fact that here is a request for a subdivision that falls under the category of area variance for the reasons which I already explained. And as far as I can read into this over here, the planning board, you gentleman and lady, are responsible to make the decision based upon what, what I just read to you, okay? Now, if, if you feel that this is not gonna change the character of the neighborhood, then I don't know what else I can say. I've lived there for almost forty years.
Well, we have that, you understand that, that we have that complaint almost every time we have a hearing, that somebody came out here, bought a piece of property, thought it was gonna be that way forever, and then it changes. It's not there a question there where we can, we can take people's rights away from them just because it doesn't look good to you or to the other person. It's something that we have to consider, and we have to consider it seriously. And what we're, what we're trying to find out is first, what is this issue there with a flag lot? Where is the definition of it? Because it's not gonna happen, it's only happened twice, you say, there. I was on two of them. So that's how many I've seen, and I don't know how many was before.
Right.
But I was on two of them, and they were definite hardships. And the people are gonna run into definite hardships that we have to consider, and that's what this board there is here for. And so, just let me finish.
Go ahead.
When we, when we review all of this, it's gonna be because we have all of the facts and we have all of the information that we need to make a decision that this board is going to make, okay?
Yes, I understand, and I, and I'll sit down and just want, this, this is not a hardship.
Well, again...
In any, in any stretch of the imagination.
Again, excuse me, sir. You say it's not a hardship, but the, I haven't asked the applicant, is it a hardship? It might be a hardship. So therefore, we, we can't there make a decision based upon what you think is not a hardship. We have to make a decision there, what we think is fair for the, for the applicant, okay?
Okay, all I'm asking you to do, sir, and the board, is to follow the law.
Okay, that's what we're gonna do.
And the law clearly says, take into consideration the change of the character and detriment to neighboring properties. Thank you for your time.
That's exactly what we're gonna do, sir.
Right, thank you for your time.
Before the next speaker comes up, I wanna just ask a question of Mr. Shul, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, and I apologize if I'm doing that, but in the memo, there's a reference to an action by the town board in 1972, which restricted the creation of flag lots. First question is, do you know how they did that? Is there, is that in the town code? Is there an ordinance?
From a point in time, 1950, somewhere between 1953 and 57, if I'm remembering correctly, the town created under section 1109, 1100, what they call a land partition. A land partition. Effectively, effectively, it was a unique treatment for a piece of property which agreed to finding as a flag lot. That existed from 1953, 57 through 1972, when the town board eliminated that section of the law and effectively said that the flag lot, that unique, that unique small parcel with, that could be cut, cut into two lots, which they dealt with under the statute, was no longer a factor, would be treated like all other subdivisions. And so essentially what lies before you today is there is no unique statute dealing with flag lots. It's a subdivision, pure and simple, and it must meet the variance requirements, which I think the last speaker addressed. And they were stating clearly what the requirements are. If you find that the variances are an entitlement of the applicant, you can approve the subdivision. The flag lot is overstated right now. It doesn't exist anymore as far as your consideration goes. It's a subdivision.
My question, though, is, according to the memo, they restricted the creation of flag lots, and my question is, how did they do that without a definition?
No, they deleted the section that made reference to flag lots. The, I have the statute here.
You mean there was an older section of the law that specifically permitted it, and then they took it out?
That's correct. Prior to, prior to 1972, from 1953 to 57, there was a provision in the law that they called a land partition, and it defined a subdivision where you took one parcel and cut it into two. And it was...
But that's, that's every subdivision.
No, it was limited to a certain size, and that existed till 1972. From 1972, in 1972, the town board deleted, this is the definition of what they call a flag lot at the time.
Did it, does it say there "flag lot," and then the definition?
It says "land partition."
Okay.
"No new street is to presently, to be presently constructed, or when a deep parcel with small frontage is to be subdivided to create only one new building lot with frontage on an improved private road, provided that when planning and improvement complications exist, regular subdivision procedure will apply. Review of land partition plot shall consider general development standards and guarantee of adequate future street access to other lands through the partitioned property." But essentially, it was a unique creation of statute that existed from 1953, 57 through 1972. In 1972, the town board, their words, deleted section 1100. And from that point on, flag lot doesn't exist. It's a subdivision, like all other subdivisions, subject to the same criteria, the same variances to be approved by this board or not.
So we're to treat this as a regular subdivision?
That's correct.
All right.
That's your, my legal opinion for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. That's the first one.
Okay. So far, I'm leaving early.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to talk on this? No, you can all have your time there to talk there, with no hurry.
Good evening. My name is Ann Polivka. That's P-O-L-I-V-K-A, and I reside at 54 Darling Avenue with my husband.
Oh, you're, oh, you're his wife?
I am his wife. It's, have been since many, many years. I would like to submit two aerial maps of my property and a survey of my property. On the survey, I took the paperwork that Ms. Bostic and Mr. Hickey submitted to you, that you're all looking at, the map of the proposed subdivision, and mathematically, I sketched in where the new residence would be and, and where their existing residence is, so that you would have a clear understanding of what it is that my husband was trying to tell you. So if you'd like, I can bring it up and show it to you. Yes?
Okay.
If you could not speak, unless I have the mic, the recorder has to...
You're just gonna give us a, she's just gonna give us a printout?
Then you gotta go back to the mic.
And then go back to the microphone. All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now what's your point?
Okay, my point on the survey is that mathematically, I've placed the size of the existing house and the size of the new proposed house next to my property, so you can see exactly what's going on. Now, I also sketched in a line, my property is a trapezoid, which, for those of you don't know, trapezoid, only two sides are parallel. So one side, the other two sides are not parallel. So the side that bounds my property with Ms. Bostic's property and Mr. Hickey's property is, is located on there, and you can see that the rear of his house is basically fifteen feet from my backyard. And that's what my husband was trying to convey to you in his presentation. So I hope that clears that up, if you wanna take a few minutes to take a look at that. All right, my property, highlighted in red, shares the eastern boundary line of 52 Darling Avenue. As you can see from picture number one, the existing residence at 52 Darling is placed further south from the street than my residence. Consequently, due to the orientation of the residence at 52 Darling, the entire seventy-four feet of the back of the home is located fifteen feet from my backyard. This obviously results in a loss of privacy for my family. If you look...
From the existing home?
The existing home, that is correct. If you look at map number two, you will see that my property has eighty-five feet of frontage on Darling Avenue, but diminishes to only forty-five feet on the southern boundary. This means that I currently enjoy the views of my woods, as well as the neighboring woods, both to my left and to my right. I also enjoy the privacy, peace, and tranquility provided by this wood buffer, which certainly diminishes any noise from the adjoining residences. My husband and I have many concerns regarding the proposal Catherine's Estates on tonight's agenda. Neither lot conforms to the requirements for a legal building plot according to R-10 zoning. Proposed lot number one, with the existing house on, on it, will only have a rear yard of forty feet instead of the required fifty feet. Proposed lot number two will only have street frontage of twenty-five feet instead of the required seventy-five feet. In addition, the proposed front yard for lot number two will only have thirty-five feet instead of the required forty feet. And I got those numbers right off of the map that you have sitting in front of you. Both proposed lots would require variances to conform to R-10... Both proposed lots would require variances to conform to R-10 zoning requirements. In the years 1992 through 1994, changes to the New York State Town, Village, and City laws went into effect to take into consideration requests for use and area variances. According to section 267.1, "An area variance shall mean the authorization by the zoning board for the use of land in a manner which is not allowed by the dimensional or physical requirements of the applicable zoning regulations." So that's a direct quote from that section. So assuming that the variances that I mentioned beforehand regarding the frontage, the backyard and the front yard requirements fall under the guise of this area variances, then the zoning board shall take into consideration, and again, this is a quote, "the benefit to the applicant if the variance is granted is weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. In making such determination, the board shall also consider whether an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the area variance. I believe if you approve this application, an undesirable change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood. The residents of Darling Avenue and Columbus Avenue enjoy a very unique and special neighborhood. Deep lots with an abundance of trees afford a level of privacy and tranquility not found anywhere else except perhaps in a two or two-plus acre zoning neighborhood. Most, if not all, of the trees will be removed from proposed lot number two to make way for a new residence, which according to the submitted paperwork would measure roughly 38 by 87 feet. If this is a one-story residence, this measures more than 3,300 square feet. In addition, trees will be removed for a new driveway for this residence. More trees will be removed from proposed lot number one to accommodate moving an existing detached two-story garage and relocating the existing driveway. This will result in a significant loss of privacy, especially to my family at 54 Darling Avenue and to the residents of Columbus Avenue, whose property is either a butt, 52 Darling, or are in close proximity to it. Loss of privacy equates to drastically reduced home values. Our homes are our most valuable asset, and as such, we must protect their value. If you look at map number two, just envision all the trees removed from proposed lot number two, and a residence occupying 87 by 38 feet of the roughly 120 by 120 feet of buildable lot. I would now have not one, but two homes in my backyard. The value of my property would be drastically reduced. The values of the surrounding homes would be drastically reduced. Our losses would far outweigh Ms. Bostick and Mr. Hickey's anticipated gain. I implore you to see how detrimental the approval of this proposal would be to our neighborhood. You have a responsibility to our neighborhood to protect it from any undesirable change in its character. You have a responsibility to prevent detrimental harm to any surrounding properties. Last April, when this proposal came before you, my husband asked the chairman if the concerns of residents in the neighborhood were listened to. His response was that those comments were taken very seriously. I hope all of you have listened, internalized, and placed yourselves in my position. As such, please reject the plan for Catherine's Estates. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank, what is the zoning for this area?
It's quarter acre, R-10.
Quarter acre. Now, do you know, quarter acre, both of the lots that are being planned are almost a half an acre?
I understand that.
And your lot, roughly figuring it, giving you the benefit of the doubt, you're about a half an acre.
A little bit more, .6.
So that it's all, the application there from the standpoint of square footage for the zoning and so forth is all proper. What we have to do is define what we're gonna do with the flag lot issue. That's what the issue is here.
Yes, I understand that the square footage requirement is met for both properties. However, as I pointed out into what I've just, you know, said to all of you, is that you don't have the frontage requirement for lot number two, you don't have the front yard required setback for lot number two, you don't have the rear yard setback for lot number one.
But that's what we have, that's what we have as a right to determine.
I understand that.
Okay? And it's not a question there where we're trying there to hurt you. We're trying there to find a way to accommodate there the application that we have before us, okay?
I understand that fully.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions by the board?
I just have a question, since we have extinguished our apparent legal opinions. I'll ask Frank, in the memo...
I don't give legal opinions. What are you gonna ask, Ron?
It says in 1972, "The board restricted the creation of flag lots, allowing this design only if it was preferred for some public purpose." But there's no statute cited. Is that accurate?
Okay, prior to 1972, you had the ability to create what we call a design as a flag lot. That was in the code. In other words, you could do it as a matter of right. If you had a long lot, you were permitted to do that. What was extinguished in 1972 was to do that as a matter of right. Did not extinguish the board's ability to consider a flag lot, but if you did, you had to grant variances in order to do that.
So you're saying that before 1972, you had a right to do a configuration such as, that's before us today?
If Mr. Hickey came...
And then they took away the specific right to do it. They didn't say you can't do it. They said this type of configuration has to be considered like any other subdivision application.
That's correct. That's what counsel basically said.
Now, where, but where does it say that it's only allowed if some public purpose is served?
No, we said, the planning department has only endorsed the creation of that when there's been a public purpose.
That's not what it says in the memo. The memo says that in 1972, "The town board restricted the creation of flag lots, allowing this design only if it was preferred for some public purpose." Says the town board said that you can only do a flag lot if a public purpose is involved. That's what the memo...
No, then that was a mis, that's a misquote.
So it's not accurate?
So it's not accurate, then?
That portion is not accurate. No, I would say that's not accurate.
So could we...
No, it's, what we have said is that the planning department has always made the right decision.
So could we strike that from the...
Yes, you may.
Okay.
All right, is there anybody else who would like to speak? Would you come to the microphone and give your name and address, please?
Good evening. My name is Shakke Kasparian, K-A-S-P-A-R-I-A-N. I reside at 48 Darling Avenue, Smithtown, New York, 11787.
What's the address?
48 Darling Avenue.
48, now that's to the west?
Yes.
On the other side of the cemetery?
Right.
Okay.
S-H-A-K-E.
Okay.
I disagree with the subdivision, because when I bought my home, when they were building these new houses, I had the understanding that Tan of Smithtown told us only one home on a one-acre lot. Now, after more than 35 years now, they wanna build another house on this one-acre property. And the property is not even correctly, it's like, long. You have to either build the house sideways or put a shack in there. I mean, a small, not even consider a house. There is two buildings on that lot already. There is the house they're living, and there is a garage, and above the garage, there is an apartment that they're renting out. Now, if they put the third one in there, it's really gonna bring down my home value. And I disagree with that.
Well, if they're doing something that's illegal, you come to the wrong place. You should call code enforcement. But that doesn't, we don't deal with that. We only deal with the application there for what is going to be built on a piece of property and whether it fits that piece of property in our eyes, okay? And we don't try to, when I came here in 1948, this was all farmland. And I wish that we could go back to when it was all farmland, but we can't. People moved here, and that's the reason that we're dealing with those issues today. As people come, as they have a concern with the children growing up there and whether they gotta divide the estate, all of those things, we have to take into consideration. And that's the reason there that we're here, is to try to find a way to make everybody there understand that what we're doing is just trying to hold the community in the direction that it's going, okay?
Okay, and one more thing. If they put the house close to the street, it will be like zigzag. I mean, that's really, will be very ugly setting.
Well, that, what we haven't resolved yet is the flag lot issue. So we have to go and resolve that first. Then this board can act in a direction there that's going there to not offend anybody, either you or them, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else who wishes to talk?
My name, excuse me, my name is Michael J. I. Mckinoe. I reside at 50...
Could you spell your last name?
First name, Michael Metternich, or J. And I reside at 56 Darling Avenue, Smithtown. And I'm in agreement with Mr. Polivka's interpretation of what has been going on. And there's not much more I could add to it, but I certainly dislike to see the area changed, because it doesn't do us any good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this?
I'm gonna work backwards. I think the allegation by the lady before the last gentleman that spoke, that there's an apartment above the garage is not true. There is no apartment. I just asked Mr. and Mrs. Hickey, and they said absolutely not. And obviously, if you want, or if she wants, she can report it to code enforcement.
She already has, and they've been...
Okay. As far as a flag lot, there, as far as I know, there is no definition in the code of a flag lot, or even more importantly, there's no prohibition of what we commonly call a flag lot. Sometimes it's called a dogleg lot. It's a lot, obviously, that fronts on the street with a, with the staff part of the flag or the smaller part, and the lot, the majority of the lot being the flag part of the lot. Another thing that the first gentleman who spoke indicated was that from 1972 to date, there were either two or three flag lots passed, and I believe that that's correct, but I also know why. And that's because, be that as it was at the time, there was a different chairman who had certain ideas, God rest his soul, that he didn't like flag lots. So very rarely would people come before this board and ask for flag lots, because they were told of what his sentiments were about flag lots. And they just, they didn't do it. And I know that for a fact, because I was here from 1972. And many times, I would say to my clients who came to me, "That's gonna be a real tough one, because of what I know happens with flag lots with the former board." As far as this, Mr. and Mrs. Hickey's self-creating this hardship, well, they didn't do anything yet. There's nothing that has been self-created. We're coming before this board and asking for a variance. Something that's self-created is done first, and then we come and beg forgiveness, so to speak. Well, that's not happening here. We've done it all the right way. We've spent a long time coming to this point in time. The two houses that were originally proposed and suggested by the planning department next to each other probably would have more of a detriment to the character of the area, being close together, than what we propose. And with respect to the house, the house, the new house, would be in the back, nobody would even see it driving down the road. So if you're talking about character of the area, I think this application certainly has less effect on the character of the area than two houses up front. On one side, I forget whether it's the east or the west, there's a cemetery. So I don't think that the cemetery, there would be any adverse effect on the cemetery. I don't know that it's an active cemetery at this point, but we all know it'll always be a cemetery, and it could never be changed, so it really doesn't have any effect. As far as the other side, where the lady and gentleman spoke first and second, as I believe the chairman brought out, when they bought their house, the Hickey's house, or the prior owner of the Hickey house, it was there. That house was there, so to speak, in their backyard. So, I mean, if anybody knew about what was going on, as far as what they bought and what they were gonna see when they went out into their backyard, it was already there. So I don't know that it's a big surprise. Another thing, and finally, what Mr. Ashen, Ashren indicated, and also, I believe it was Mr. Rehart, the suggestion or the question was, is there any way that we could mitigate this on the gentleman and lady's side? And I'm sure if, you know, we're certainly not gonna cut down trees that we don't have to. Actually, you're not allowed to do that when you make an application for a subdivision. They're very, very strict about that. And the interesting part of that is, if a homeowner wants to cut down every tree on his property, he could do that now. When you go for a subdivision, all of a sudden, there's a million controls, and the town, Smithtown Department of Environmental Conservation, they even have an arborist, they check every tree, and if you tell them, "I wanna cut down this tree, 'cause it's not a good tree, it's dying," or whatever, he comes out and he checks it, and they also do a tree-clearing plan. So all of this is done to protect surrounding neighbors. So again, we asked the board for its favorable consideration. We certainly don't want any neighbor upset by what's going on, but I think if they think about it, this is gonna have less of an effect than if you put two houses right next to each other in this particular area. And again, it's almost an acre of property and almost a half acre for each parcel lot one and two, and that's as much as most of the people have in that... one and two, and that's as much as most of the people have in that vicinity anyway.
Would your, would your client be willing there to buffer the eastern edge of the property so it wouldn't offend the landlord, if they got this application?
And also agree, as a condition of the approval, that that's gonna be done?
Yes.
Okay?
Thank you.
If the...
Yes?
In all due respect, I have to respond to some comments here.
Yes, yes, you can come up again. Try not to repeat yourself, all right?
I'll do my best.
Okay, no problem here.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, first, let me just respond to the, Mr. Tramaco's reference to the fact that the house was there in 1973 when we bought our house. That's true. But we had no anticipation or expectation that somewhere down the road, down the line, 25, 30 years later, that someone would come along and request to subdivide the lot into two lots, neither one of which meet the R10 requirements that require variances. That's number one. Secondly, my reference to self-created, let me again repeat and read, I'm repeating myself because it's important I clarify. This is again quoting, "In making such determination, the board shall also consider whether an undesirable change..." Let me emphasize that, undesirable change. Mr. Tramaco does not live at 54 Darling Avenue. "...will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or a detriment to nearby properties created by the granting of the area variances." And, and this is the point here, "And whether the alleged difficulty was self-created." I'm assuming that the alleged difficulty that's being stated, referred to here, is the fact that there are variances required. If their property was such that you could subdivide the lot where there were no variances required, this wouldn't be an issue. There would be no self-created difficulty. So, I wanna clarify that. As far as planting a buffer zone, that's, that's, the trees is not the issue. We're talking about changing the character of the neighborhood, detriment to nearby properties, meaning myself, Mr. Ryan Akino.
Yes, I've heard you say that, sir.
Yes.
And let me, I don't want that repeated again. We understand your feelings. We understand that completely. What we have is regularly come into this board, people that have bought a piece of property. The builder told them, or the real estate man told them, "That's gonna be a park for as long as you live." And then the thing is subdivided. You can't stop people there from subdividing their property if they have a right to subdivide it. It's a question of how they subdivide it. That's what we have to clarify, whether a flaglot is an issue in this one or not. Understand?
No, I understand, okay?
Okay.
My last point, and I know I'm gonna sound repetitious. Clearly, it states that the Board of Appeals, you gentlemen and lady, have a responsibility to look after my interests.
Yes.
Nearby properties, character of the neighborhood.
Right, if you had a piece of property like this, absolutely. And you came to us, we'd have to respect your, your rights there to be able to subdivide it. That's not the case here, so that, that is something that we have to handle for this applicant.
Right. All I'm asking is that for the chairman yourself, and other members of the board, to live up to the comment, or the response you gave to me at last April's meeting, is that you take our comments seriously.
Yes, absolutely.
Right, thank you very much.
Anybody else would like to be heard? All right, I think we oughta have a, adjournment on this issue till we get this flaglot issue straightened up. Can I have a motion for that?
And also to strike that, that portion of the memo from the peering again.
For the public purpose.
Yeah. You want me to?
Yeah.
First, I'd like to move to strike the following sentence.
Oh.
If we adjourn it, he can do that.
Oh, okay.
And the next time it comes on, it'll be corrected.
Fine, fine.
I think that's a better way.
Okay.
A motion there to adjourn this issue?
I move to adjourn this matter.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody's aye?
Aye.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, is it possible for us also to do an onsite inspection?
What did you say?
Is it possible for us also to do an onsite inspection?
Yes, we can do an onsite inspection again, if you would like. Yes, absolutely. Okay?
So, we're, are we adjourning for an onsite?
Well, you, if you wanna, if you wanna do it, we already supposed to have an onsite on this once, but you can do it again. Make a motion there to onsite.
Then why don't we just say that we're adjourning for the purpose of an onsite?
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? So ordered. Thank you. Please.
Mr. Chairman, we'll now move on to Part II of the agenda, item three, number 2010-09, RNF Management. Mr. Chairman, this application was brought before the board at a public hearing on February 2nd of this year. The matter was adjourned for the board to have an opportunity to review the facts. They, from my understanding, did contact the planning department and asked us to bring back a recommendation to you regarding this application. I would like to read to you, beginning from item six in your memorandum, it's the evaluation regarding the application.
Has this, has this been posted there and?
It's not required.
It was adjourned.
Not required, okay.
Right. The advantages of this application are, approval would permit certain, would permit certain of the existing businesses to remain at this location. The site is designed for a strip center, although it is only, has one-third of the required parking for that use. The disadvantages would be, approval would not be consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Approval would tend to set a precedent for similar rezoning requests in this corridor. And there is no apparent public purpose for the change in zoning, and approval could be considered spot zoning. The recommendation is that the planning department recommends denial of this application and offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby recommends that the town board deny petition number 2010-09 of RNF Management LLC for a change of zone from WSI to NB for the following reasons. A, the proposed zoning is not consistent with the town's comprehensive plan, which encourages concentration of retail businesses at central locations. B, approval would tend to set a precedent by allowing a significant addition of land to the NB zoning category at a location not usually recommended for NB uses, and would tend to undermine existing centers such as downtowns and major shopping centers. C, approval would constitute spot zoning in that the zoning is inconsistent with the pattern of zoning in the surrounding area, and there is no apparent public purpose for the requested zoning at this location. If the planning board wishes to recommend approval of this petition, the following resolution is offered. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby recommends that the town board approve petition number 2010-09 of RNF Management LLC for a change of zone from WSI to NB. Mr. Chairman, these are the recommendations put forth to the planning board for the zone change position of RNF Management number 2010-09.
Is there anybody here representing the applicant?
Vincent J. Tramaco, 1038 West Jericho Turnpike, Smithtown, New York. I guess there should be some sort of a notification, and I don't know, maybe planning notified my office, and I just missed up the whole thing, that there was gonna be a recommendation Maybe there's nothing in the rules that say you have to do it, but...
I, the last meeting, it was asked in public session, and I thought you were here, Mr. Tramaco, whether this was gonna be brought up at this meeting, and we said yes. I presumed, and I apologize, that you would be notified. It's my error.
So, could we put this over for, and then, for, until the next meeting, so that I could read that report and...
I think that's fair.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Any objections from the board?
No.
A motion there to hold this over for, what meeting would be that? That would be the?
March 16th.
March 16th? Okay.
March 16th.
Thank you.
A motion?
Move to adjourn this matter to March 16th.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Yeah, this is just the secret recommendation, and then the new application comes up.
Mr. Chairman, the next item we're gonna have is TC Mobile. We only have an extension of a performance bond, which will take 30 seconds. Can we move that up on the agenda? That's the hamlet, line 15. I don't think there's gonna be any...
And line 14.
And line 14.
You wanna move to the next one, then?
Well, line 14 and 15, because we expect some discussion with the other two.
Oh, you expected that from the discussion, all right.
And given the lateness of the hour, let's get rid of the small cases that these only take about 30 seconds.
Makes sense to me.
Good. The next, the next application.
Mr. Chairman, that takes us to Part V of the agenda, item 14, number 940, La Monaco Platt. The applicant requests to extend the performance bond for a period of two years to end on December 18th, 2012, in order to obtain more time to complete construction and all necessary improvements. The applicant received conditional final approval for this two-lot subdivision from the planning board on February 19th, 1997. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $13,739 was approved by the board and subsequently signed by the chairman. The applicant submitted the bond monies and all related materials to the town, and the town board accepted a performance bond and cash deposit on February 10th, 1998. On December 6th, 2006, the town board released the original performance bond and accepted cash in lieu of a performance bond as a replacement bond. Planning board approval for this performance bond expired on December 18th, 2010. The engineering department contacted the applicant by letter dated November 15th, 2010, informing them the bond would expire, and that the applicant should contact the planning department to make the appropriate application to the board for an extension. The applicant submitted a performance bond extension application on November 23rd, 2010, to the planning department, and the application was distributed to all departments concerned for review. The traffic safety, engineering, and highway departments have no objection to the performance bond extension request, and have determined that the bond amount is sufficient to cover all remaining improvements. The planning department has performed an onsite inspection of the subdivision, and has determined that all of the public improvements appear to have been completed. Additionally, one home has been constructed on lot number two, for which the building department issued a certificate of occupancy on June 11th, 2004. The planning department has no objection to the applicant's request for an extension. However, we recommend that the applicant begin the performance bond release process at this time. At this point, the applicant can construct a home on lot number one as a building permit marker, and any public improvements that may be required at that time can be bonded by the engineering department. Therefore, the planning department recommends the performance bond be extended for a period of six months in order for the applicant to complete the performance bond release process. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves an extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as La Monaco Platt, number 940, for a period of six months to expire on June 18th, 2011. And just to correct the resolution, it should say retroactive extension. Mr. Chairman, this is the planning department's recommendation for La Monaco Platt, number 940.
Is there anybody here representing the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Vincent Tramaco. I represent the applicant, and I'm fine with the resolution.
Anybody in the audience that wishes to talk on this application? Members of the board, any question? A motion there to approve the performance bond for La Monaco Platt, 940.
Motion to approve a retroactive extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as La Monaco Platt, number 940, for a period of six months to expire on June 18th, 2011.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part V, item 15, number 1013, Hamlet Estates at St. James, Section 3. The applicant requests to extend the performance bond for a period of two years to expire on December 12th, 2012, in order to obtain more time to complete construction and all necessary improvements. The applicant received conditional final approval for this 50-lot clustered subdivision from the planning board on November 17th, 2004. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $570,702 was approved by the board and subsequently signed by the chairman. The applicant submitted the bond monies and all related materials to the town, and the town board accepted performance bond number 528943S by Developer Surety and Indemnity Company on August 9th, 2004. Planning board approval for this performance bond expired on December 12th, 2010. The engineering department contacted the applicant by letter dated November 16th, 2010, informing them the bond would expire, and that the applicant should contact the planning department to make the appropriate application to the board for an extension. The applicant submitted a performance bond extension application on December 2nd, 2010, to the planning department, and the application was distributed to all departments concerned for review. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments have no objection to the performance bond extension request, and have determined that the bond amount is sufficient to cover all remaining improvements. The planning department has determined that most of the public improvements have not been completed in this section, and that most of the homes are not constructed. Therefore, planning does not object to the applicant's request. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Hamlet Estates at St. James, Section 3, number 1013, for a two-year period from December 12th, 2010 through December 12th, 2012. Mr. Chairman, this is the planning department's recommendation for Hamlet Estates at St. James, Section 3, number 1013.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Richard Spirio. I represent the Hamlet Estates at St. James. We very much agree with the recommendations of the department, and then ask that the board approve it in that same manner.
Anybody here wishes to have a question about this application? Motion by the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion in regards to Hamlet Estates at St. James to approve an extension of the performance bond for Section 3 for a two-year period from December 12th, 2010 through December 12th, 2012.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you again. By way of a courtesy, I would like to extend an invitation, now that the weather's changed a little bit, to the board members who have been pretty cooperative in getting our sections moved along. As you know, we constructed some new models in Section 4 just prior to the winter season, so we have now completed them. They are available for viewing. If you'd like to schedule a road trip or something, I'd be glad to attend and kinda help you look through everything.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome. Where are we at? We are at, okay. We're gonna do 1001 because that's just a secret, and then we can save 1101 for last.
Okay. Which T, which T-Mobile are we doing now?
Both of them, actually, but the first one is just...
The first one will be item 11 under Part 4. It's TC 10-01. Mr. Chairman, this application was brought before the board at a public hearing October 6th of 2010, and was adjourned, awaiting a secret recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways. We have received the secret negative declaration, and with the board's permission, I'd like to read that into the record. The following resolution is recommended for the special exception petition, number TC 10-01, T-Mobile Northeast LLC, from the Department of Environment and Waterways pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Be it resolved that the planning board of the town of Smithtown hereby declares itself lead agency on this matter, and finds that this matter is subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, and is classified as an unlisted action pursuant to secret. And be it resolved that the planning board of the town of Smithtown does hereby issue a secret negative declaration, determination of non-significance, and EIS is not necessary, in the matter of the special exception petition, number TC, that should say 10-01, by T-Mobile Northeast LLC... Northeast LLC for the following reasons. A, the proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the environmental conservation law of the state of New York or the Smithtown Town Code. B, the proposal does not involve the physical modification of or construction upon lands which suffer from any severe environmental development constraints, no high groundwater, no poor soil properties, and no unmanageable slopes. C, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel and compatible with neighboring land uses. D, the nature of the proposal mitigates against a significant adverse impact upon the environment, that being the placement of telecommunications antennas on the roof with concealment screening to block the antennas from view and thereby minimizing visual impacts. And E, the proposal appears to be consistent with the location, site, design, and safety requirements of Chapter 242 of the Smithtown Town Code. The planning department recommends approval of this application and offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it further resolved that the planning board hereby approves the application of T-Mobile Northeast LLC, special exception petition, number TC 10-01, for a personal wireless service facility pursuant to Chapters 242 and 322-30.3 of the Town Code, subject to the following condition. One, appropriate signage shall be installed on all access points to the roof that provides the following information. A, notification that a telecommunications facility which produces radio frequency emissions is present on the roof. B, identification of the radio frequency emission range. And C, provision of contact information to arrange for shut off of the facility in the event that is necessary for any person or people to be on the roof. Mr. Chairman, this is the planning department's recommendation for.
Identify the location so that the public knows it's not the other one.
One moment. I just wanted everyone that's in the audience to be aware that this is not the CVS location in the San Remo area, this is another location in town. Mr. Chairman, this is the planning department's recommendation for the special exception petition, TC 10-01, T-Mobile Northeast.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Janine Bruno of Ray Nielsen Huber and Coglin LLP, appearing on behalf of the applicant, T-Mobile Northeast LLC. We just want to thank the board for its time and consideration of the application, and we respectfully request that the application be granted. And if you have any additional questions, I'm available.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this application? Hearing none, a motion there for the secret negative.
In the matter of TC 10-01, T-Mobile Northeast LLC, motion to approve the secret negative declaration as recommended by the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered. On the special exception.
In the matter of T-Mobile Northeast LLC, special exception petition, TC 10-01, motion to adopt the resolution as read, subject to the conditions recommended by the planning department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
We anticipate that the next meeting will last a long time. I don't know if the board would like to take a three-minute break or a five-minute break, or if you want to proceed.
You expect there to be?
I expect there to be at least.
Well, why don't we adjourn for five or 10 minutes then?
Oh, well, that's whatever you want. I would say five.
Any problems with the board?
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right.
Thank you.